I don't read.
I mean, we speak here.
You're right, huh?
The likely.
I like it.
They're like those two months.
And do you do it or is my girlfriend?
Can I show your girlfriend?
Okay.
Uh, I know.
I don't think, I don't think there's working.
I hear.
Yeah.
I didn't want to. College. Little. Oh, you didn't get any dance and.
Maybe that was good, then you said any part of it.
Hey, the clock full of science and six, six applies, so if there's no objections, let's see if give this meeting started, George, are you ready to go?
I'm checking the record.
While she's checking on this, I want to remind everybody, we are on worldwide television via YouTube. So uh, make sure your home over here is rushed and counselors, make sure your name tags are uh, in a position so everybody out there can see us um. How will we look in Georgia? Joe Klein, thank you for attending. Appreciate it. There we go, that's what we're waiting for. Uh, welcome, everybody, uh, is July fourteenth town board meeting about the ground six o'clock, uh, any changes to the agenda? Seeing no requests, let's move on, uh. May the record show that all uh, all the counselors are here as well as the attorney, uh, but Matt Topic is absent. Uh, with further review.
There's also guests signing in.
And I gather all guests have signed in. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Ken, please.
Thank you, sir, uh. Living's Edge. The uh, UMH has a draft, uh, I think we'll shoot up for a, at least I am shooting for an H two contract by August. Um, I don't have any particular other updates, we've not heard any pushback based on our proposal to them. And uh, we could review that, but it's essentially what we've been talking about, that they're going to take hundred percent of the first phase and then run down from there, but that's consistent with what our financial plan would allow us to do, and so at least my goal, and maybe Dave, you could pick to it, my goal would be to have it executed by the August meetings, that seem realistic based on what you know of what they're doing?
I hope so, that's ours as well, um, we've provided some, okay, I should say Chris provided some additional technical information, um, that they've requested based on the flow of calculations and area calculations, just so they can understand where we came up with the percentages are backed up for their different pieces of each phase. And we've not had any comments back from them, we've reached out to them and haven't heard back yet if they've got any questions or comments, concerns, and even pointed out, we'd like to target something for August for the council, so.
So any questions on that? Good, good. And um, Jude Street, um, William Robin A. or Robinette, you know, I can't remember how you.
Robinette.
Robinette.
Yep.
He um, has been out, he is the inspector for the county. Um, it's his opinion that the building is unsafe for one reason and one reason only, and that is the windows broken, and as he said, if they come to take, before buying sheets and throw them up there, it would be in compliance with unsafe structure, so we got two different tracks here. There's the unsafe structure law, which is an Indiana state law that says if you have a problem in your community, you can use the Indiana state law to try and get condemned and torn down. It's a, we, we talked about a little bit, it's it was used on the hotel. And you know, it took a long time on the hotel, but that was a complicated project with an awful lot of of financial interest that's saved on both sides. So that's one track, and the starting point for that is to have a uh, report that shows that it is an unsafe building. So while we can continue to go down that track, I think it's important, and we're in the process of talking to Mr. Robinette to try and get him to see a little more broadly, that isn't it true that a hole in the roof is as bad as an empty window, and we're kind of working with him on that. Um, because if, if we don't have support that it's unsafe, then our uh, our ultimate um, conclusion, which is it's unsafe and therefore, therefore it should be torn down, uh, is not very strong. And if he doesn't, and he's, you know, he likes to help, he's not, it's not like he's a difficult guy, he, he, he likes to help, but he's not seen as an unsafe structure, so that's the state track, that's the track we're investigating right now. The other track is the good old go to court and sue him for every nickel you can get based on the uh, ordinance violation. Um, we've got a lot of years, I don't know how many years we've got of evidence to show that's been out of compliance each day that goes by. Uh, the fine is imposed, and so there would be tens of thousands of dollars of damages. And what that enables us to do is if we get a judgment without amount, then we can essentially have it sold at Sheriff's sale. And then the question is who buys? If somebody gonna buy it to knock it down to put, put up a new house, I don't know that. So there's a little bit of uncertainty there, now the town has purchased property before, but I'm not suggesting that that's what we ought to be doing. Uh, because this is a residential structure. So my recommendation is we're going to continue to uh, to encourage Mr. Robinette to see it a little bit more broadly and be able to say, yeah, we've got a lot of reasons it's an unsafe structure. Um, and I think it before we really initiate that project or that process anymore than just getting him to try and see it uh, as an unsafe structure, that we go ahead and file, we file the suit, hit the suit on file and try and get a judgment that gives us, that gives us that option. And I think as long as that option gets us a sizable judgment, I mean, the value that property is not held at this moment. Now, there's nobody gonna pay much for it. And so if we get, if we get a sizable judgment, which I'm confident we'd be able to do, we can get an order that puts it up to Sheriff's set. And then it gets right to that point. Among all the, all the business minds in the room, is somebody gonna bid on that?
Sure.
Seems like it, but it costs to tear it down.
You're assuming it's gonna be torn down.
Hmm, if you bought it, what would you do? If you tear it down, fix it?
But I would go in and do an assessment.
Right.
And you need to evaluate what kind of internal and external damages there are. I mean, it's a, it's figured as a, at least a two unit apartment.
Yeah.
Uh, corner lot. You know, and preferably the architectural value is more in line with the historic nature, it was torn down, but there's no guarantee that we're whatever architectural.
I mean, not the ideal, somebody who's got, got the money to do it, puts it back together, makes it a nice rental, and you know, you got housing for folks, ma'am.
The family that lives next door was here at the last meeting and one of their main concerns was that that emulsive house harbors, so is this broken window? I mean, is that part of the broken window?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So that his his assessment of the unsafe structure incorporates that thing about the animals or raccoons and squirrels and mice and everything.
Well, they'll still get through the hole.
And that's why I said that roof's the same, you gotta hold the roof, go all on the side, the squirrel really didn't care which one goes.
She couldn't make it to this meeting, but she could call again today and said, would someone please reach out and let her know?
And, and I would suggest, if she were here, I would encourage her to call the county inspector, Mr. Robinette, or send an email, I think they have a, a hotline that you can just send something, you send the address and say, this is a mess, please help us. Uh, help, he's not health department. And that's another thing, you've got that kind of road problem, maybe the health department may have some input into that also. So um, that's my recommendation. It is not an expensive proposition to file a lawsuit against a person who is unlikely to defend it. If it's all about what they do, not what we do, uh, if they defend vigorously, well, yeah, you can get into some money. Otherwise, it's not, you know, we're talking fifteen hundred bucks maybe, we get attorney fees from a person, which comes back from the sale of the property ultimately, but you know, we're we, there are questions about what they value, who we bid on, all those things we were just discussing. So I think we should file a lawsuit, isn't it?
And we, at the last meeting voted to spend a sum of money to care for the trees that threaten the neighboring, so we were, but I'm gonna do that, put that on as a lean, is that still the way to go?
Well, we, we can remediate outdoor problems such as weed height. I don't think a tree's a problem either, we can do all those things, what we cannot do under the law is go to the structure and start messing with the structure. So there's a tree, cut it down, yes. Give them the notice, put it on their, put it on property taxes, and it's paid as a uh, as a lead against property, so we can do that for exterior conditions that need to be cleaned up. But not, we can't touch either.
So we're gonna tend to dead branches and those trees and dead trees.
Yeah. And then put a lean back on.
And all we have to do is contract somebody to do it.
Yeah, you give them the notice, you know, we, we sent them the notice about the unsafe building to sort of initiate, of course, it came back unclaimed, but that's okay. You know, somebody can't just hide and avoid um, being sued just by not responding, so you know, it wasn't surprising that they didn't respond, or is it he, is it just an individual guy, I've forgotten, one man? That I.
Yeah.
A husband and wife, is it?
I don't believe so, now there's one woman listed.
So that's my recommendation, we get that, we get that while we're on, um, and that gets the time clock going, if he doesn't defend, you're looking at thirty to forty-five days, you have a judgment, and then we decide what to do with the judge.
Motion to authorize Eric to uh, proceed.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Eric to proceed with um, for official for business with Joel, Jude Street. One oh two.
Second.
Motion, motion by Mary Jo, second by Steve on, all in favor, say aye, 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 motion passes, thank you.
We'll get it going this week.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, related to this now, uh, it's okay to we have a couple of quotes on trees, tree work.
Yeah.
We can execute that.
Hmm, have we given a notice, George, excuse me? Have we gotten that, given them that notice that says, hey, you gotta clean this up or we're gonna do something?
Oh, look to the police department for that.
You know, if that's been done, it's.
So they've, yeah, they've, they've got warnings, they've gotten the citations. Uh, and then that is, but they are not able to be uh, essentially pinned to them, there, there's no one there.
I know, but then there's, there's the specific statutory notice that says you have a condition that we are about to clean up, if you don't do it, if you don't do it within, I think it's ten days, you don't do it, you will do it, and then we will put a lien on your property for the cost.
Hmm. I'll get you the exact version.
All right.
But maybe you say something, you say something essentially like that, maybe citations.
If it's, if it covers it, it's fine, we just have to make sure, I know we've done it before.
It's whatever.
Like excess weeds and stuff like that. We've had a couple, we had to clean up our. And then go on as well, so. You get me that, we'll look at it, and if it's good, then we'll let you know, if it's not, we'll let you know. Here's what I've got sent to him, we're pretty, get it all.
Another issue, uh, related to trees. One oh two, Winans Street. There is a fairly decent sized maple tree. Uh, it's got a hole in the side and it's hollow. Now, first big wind, second big wind, whatever, is precarious. Tree looks ever reasonable on first glance, but I was amazed that, my gosh, there's a hole, there's a hole in it, about that bigger, you looked in. Oh, so um, it's between the sidewalk and the street.
Good.
So do we need to notify the owner, I mean?
I would.
Me, it's.
You get them to pay for it. I would notify and say, hey, this is your tree. Is it telling, if you look at their property lines, it's gonna be in their property. Now, it's in the public right of way. Um, so it, it's sort of like sidewalks that we're gonna talk about in a minute here. Um, so, you know, they've got some liability since it's on their.
Probably, that's between the sidewalk and the street.
Hmm, okay. It still should be, I would say that the line of property line is gonna, that, that probably is in theirs, you think, given the age of our, this is in town, so it.
You think about look on GIS to make sure sidewalks are often in the right of way, so the back of sidewalk might be their front lot line.
Yeah.
It just depends on how it's platted.
And if it's not theirs, you know, we just have to treat it as a public public problem and go take care of it.
And the procedures on that would be to notify the property owners?
If it's on their property.
And we're gonna, from that with GIS, I guess?
That's where I'm starting, just because it'd be fastest, quickest, easiest thing to look if it's obvious or.
And sometimes those GIS lines aren't real.
No, they're not.
Sometimes they're not.
They tend to be pretty good towards the road as opposed to the sideline.
And, and about, this is a platted older subdivision, older neighborhood in town, so it's not gonna have the best records, they're gonna be basing that information on, but my guess is it's probably in the right of way.
So, I mean, I think we can, oh, let me put it this way, we can do what we think is right, but if it's a hazard and we wanna spend town's resources to chop it down, we can do it.
Ron, maybe stop by and look at, look through your assessment on it.
I'm just saying you should notify them, say, hey, you got people in there, that wall's on somebody. If it's on their property, they got, they got a liability out of it.
Joanne.
Well, just on the same line though, even if it isn't on their property, I think it's just because people have grown up with all these large trees to have one just removed without any notice whatsoever, even if that's just as a neighborly thing, just to say.
No.
It, it's a problem, it's not on your property, but we're gonna have to take it down.
They would be notified, that's absolutely.
Okay, I just think as a neighborly thing.
Yeah, no, yeah. But to go in and unannounce.
Yeah.
Remove a tree. That's not that's not respectable. Okay, uh, that's thank you for those comments, uh. Next item on your.
The next one is on uh, the sidewalk, and this is sort of related. Um, so you start with state law, and state law for a long time has said, if you have a piece of property that has a sidewalk next to it, in almost all cases, that sidewalk is your responsibility as the property. A lot of people don't like that, a lot of people don't even know that, but that's the way the state law starts out. Um, we as a, we as a, a town, or any town, could say, no, we don't want it that way, we want a town being charged, we've never done that, we shouldn't do it, in my view. And it is the state law. That is a sidewalk, that is the responsibility of the person who lives there, so when it becomes dilapidated, it is the responsibility of the adjoining property, so to, you know, I understand why they don't like it, because if you're on a corner, that's a lot of sidewalk, but that's, that is the law. Um, I can tell you that um, some municipalities enforce that hard and make the property owners pay for the whole thing, some of them make a policy that we're gonna pay fifty fifty, I think Lafayette has a fifty fifty policy. If somebody's got a bad sidewalk, they'll say to them, look, guys, this is your responsibility, but we're gonna go in half with you. And then they, you know, they share the fifty fifty, some places, uh, like in West Lafayette, they just do it. But that's a lot fewer miles of sidewalk in West Lafayette. So we have never done anything uh, with our ordinance that has changed the state law that says you are responsible. I do not know, but I am gonna guess that we have probably done a percentage um, share.
Fifty fifties.
Fifty fifty, and that again, that's up to the town council to decide, and I know that the issue that um, that you're particularly interested in with sidewalks has to do with the uh, stretch going to the school. And back in sixteen, uh, you folks changed your ordinance, the, the only real change this ordinance has been in effect for a long time, but there was a change in sixteen that really the major change was to put in a separate category for primary school sidewalk corridor, which is exactly what we're talking about here, so when the when the little ones are stumbling around on the crumbling sidewalk, that is a separate and probably a prioritized uh, area.
And I think it's important to note that because there's probably ten, maybe ten property owners at the most who will be impacted by this, and they will say, well, why aren't you enforcing it to everybody else? And the argument will be, yeah, this is a primary sidewalk corridor for safety for school kids, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to point out that even the school the elementary school has some encroachment issues, so they won't be exempt from this. And I'm kind of pushing on this this time around because school season's gonna be starting. That sidewalk is gonna be used more. And it's just, and there's two sections around West Street, I think, I don't know what it is, for Gary Carter's property and.
East Street.
Uh, from the telephone department, or maybe it's Gary, I don't know, uh, that sidewalk needs to be replaced, you know? And so if the homeowners don't do it, can we hire somebody to do it, and we'll put means on it?
Same, the things you're just talking about, the law says it's their responsibility, you have to give them a notice that says, hey, you gotta do this, it's your, your responsibility, it's not going, claim that they're they're gonna either do it, or the town will do it at their expense, and then it's a lien on their property. So yes, that's exactly what happens, and uh, the um, the change that was made uh, primary school corridor, uh, this is in the two thousand and six, there's actually two thousand twenty-two. Yes, good, seven, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, primary school corridor prioritizes the installation improvement maintenance of sidewalks that connect the schools with the park and location on North and River Street to protect those vulnerable members of our community. And then it's a funded, considered to be a funding priority, so you have the you have the authority to do that, and then we also have the authority to say, and by the way, we're gonna do fifty fifty with it or whatever, I know that sometimes in the past, there've been block grant funds, federal block grant funds that were used to share in certain areas, and you just pick an entire run so that, you know, it's cheaper to do it as a run rather than spot spot fixes all over town, so.
I would say that a quarter to a third of the sidewalk has aggressive edging problems where the sidewalk itself might be five feet, but it narrows down to maybe three feet, and not only that, there is growth with the uh, stress cracks, joints. Um, it would be nice to have that all cleaned up along through there. And if we need to set a budget, I mean, there's two issues. Clean up the vegetation issues and then the sidewalk issues. Uh, the sidewalk replacement issues. So do we need to get prices, we need to get a price for the sidewalk replacement. But then if the homeowners don't do the work themselves, we need to find a contractor who'll come in and address all the other issues. What do you think? Need back comments?
I think it's important to have the sidewalks fixed for it.
It's, it, it's languished for years and sorry, Gary Carter, but yeah, you're the winner on this. Uh, okay, um, do we need to set a tentative budget?
Let me ask you this, should we get a quote first before we do tentative budget?
Sure. Your guidance on it.
So I got, uh, Steve and I got a quote for uh, uh, high school. We gotta give you an idea roughly. Uh, from the school to the intermediate is forty-three thousand.
Two blocks.
Just two block.
This is a half a block, mate, this is.
It's about a half block, so this is, I would think ten.
Ten thousand.
We're catching the ballpark.
So it'll be ten plus whatever somebody charges to dress up all the edging and cracks and tree branches and whatever else, if the homeowners don't do it. Okay, I could, um. Ron, do you wanna take? Or Steve, maybe both of you wanna get contact with the contractor to get the price for that section of sidewalk here.
Is that my part of Main Street, is that the primary school corridor?
Yes.
Hmm.
John.
So on, on high school, there are I believe two bushes and a tree uh, that are in the way. But it's, and it's still and it's not. Uh, I'm gonna affect the home of the period. The motions. Uh.
Well, before you do that, we need to get a question in. Yeah.
For immediate cut of the analysis.
What?
Well, we shouldn't cut anything until we know that we've got the money to do the whole project, the sales just saying.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, but in, if this project goes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I won't be the one.
Yeah, yeah, okay, hey. Um, I would like to see a sketch of the proposed layout and where the sidewalk's gonna go, okay, I've heard articulated by Adam. I'd like to be able to visualize it, so if you could do a sketch of how all that's gonna go where tentative, locate the trees and the obstructions. Any comments on that, Ron? Okay.
Uh, so back to Main Street.
Back to Main Street.
What is your desire to see happen on the Main Street now? Just cutting back and cleaning up only?
Except for the two at least for Gary Carter's sidewalk. And if you're gonna do Gary's, might as well do the property right next to it, because that'll take it up to whatever that street is.
East Street.
East Street.
Do you need a quote for that section? But it might as well be on the company that's selected to come and do the other, so we need to revise that quote.
Just put the two together. Uh-huh. I can have the two that you mentioned.
Because it's my understanding, if it's the primary school corridor and they're side about the board, it's not a half and half, it's, we pay it all.
Oh, is it? Oh.
Well, that's what you did for Winans, so I'm assuming that's what we. High school.
I don't know, that's a, that's a good point, I mean.
The two blocks of Winans was not fifty fifty.
Ah. Do you want to pay hundred percent of it?
I'm okay with it because it's for the kids of the town, so I mean, I know it's, it's a hefty price take, but I think we should do it.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to clarify that you wanted the sidewalk replaced as opposed to just cleaned up and patched.
There's, there.
Or ground, I know there's some places where it's like this, and you can grind that, what, much cheaply, then you place that whole thing, because your Main Street uh, reconstruction is gonna happen conceivably fairly soon.
Haven't heard any timelines on it.
I don't know, because that's something that you need to, it's a council's home. But I'm advocating that you get started talking about it, because it'll take eighteen months, it takes two.
So the sidewalks, there's two issues, vegetation and overgrowth and controlling that, and then that's actual sidewalk repair.
That's great, I see, man.
So, um. Joanne.
I think if, for the replacement of Gary Carter's, it has sunk down so far down below the street, and that's flooding, and that's why if it's replaced, it needs to be higher. It can't just be like patched over because of the city, so.
Yes, yeah, there's gonna be multiple issues there.
Yeah.
So.
But number one, it's getting flooded every time it rains, so.
Yes.
It has to be higher on that end of East Street.
Yes.
Ma'am. I feel like as a homeowner, the homeowner should be responsible for the edging of the sidewalk. I don't think the town should have to pay for that.
I.
So I just, I'm just throwing that out there, and I, you know, I feel as though when you think about the budgeting, yes, you should probably include it, but I think that you should put that on the homeowner first and then the lien or whatever.
Well, and we will give them the opportunity to take care of themselves, but if they don't.
No, I understand.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, they, they will give them for, they will be given for shot, definitely, yes. Thank you for your comment. Any other? So do we know what we're doing here?
So he's gonna go back and get additional quote, uh, arranged, so that other parts in it. Like, is that right?
Okay. And then we have to keep in mind, find a contractor or somebody who will come in to address the, 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 the growth issues of the properties that the homeowners are taking care of. I took, okay. Um, I'm good on that topic, but any, any comments?
Okay, last is on the bond ordinance, as you recall, the financing structure for the Gateway Regional Project is uh,[1773.98] For the Gateway Regional Project is uh, related to bond funding. In order to have a bond, uh, issue is necessary that you have a bad bond ordinance passed on first and second reading. This bond ordinance was passed on first reading and I wanna say March, I thought I had it in the packet and I do not. Uh, but it's been passed and it's been some months ago. And so I know that Bond Council, Rich Sharkey at the Barnes and Thornburg. Uh, a firm had asked about it and then. Wanted to make sure that it was going to pass before they continue to make further. You know, efforts towards getting this done, but uh, by passing it tonight, you're not obligating the town through any money. Because you still have to fund the thing and so is that the?
This is the first part, I didn't print all the exhibits, this is the, and they didn't.
All right.
So there's, this is all of the, there is a place for everyone to sign if they all need it.
So this is a chunk, this is a chunk paperwork, that's for sure. This is, this is very common in the, in, in the. Bond arena, um, it talks about uh, funds not to exceed. Uh, fifteen million dollars, that obviously means you don't have to go there and goes back to my original point is by. By passing it, you're not authorizing expenditure, you are just allowing the structure to be there when you decide, yeah, we're gonna do that. We're gonna go to twelve million, we're not gonna go to fifteen, whatever you decide, can't go over fifteen. It also provides for bands, which is essentially a short term borrowing that allows work to be done. Um, and uh, there's an interest factor on that, on that short term borrowing and then that is usually taken out by the. Permanent bond once that is completely finished. Um, and so my recommendation was we can pass uh, the ordinance number twenty twenty five dash six five zero. Uh, which is the bond ordinance for the wastewater project on second reading.
So, like to make a motion? Is that what we're waiting for? Yeah, okay.
Pass the glory around.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to uh, pass the bond ordinance second reading for the Gateway Regional Project financing.
Excellent. Motion by Chad, second by Steve, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed to unanimous, so he counts, thank you.
And that gives you authority to sign that for the. For the council. And that is the end of mine. Are any questions about this or anything else?
Oh, and he says, anything else?
Anything else, well, I'm concerned because I'm kinda illegally parked out there, so I was.
I was just at six, not here. So why are you illegally parked? Because somebody?
I mean, it is crowded, it was, oh yeah, it was white truck.
Yeah, the white truck took up two parking spots.
Probably did, yeah, probably did. Two thirty five, where are you going? Holy cow. So anything, if not?
Georgia, we're good.
We're good?
I guess it's it.
All right, well, thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too.
And I will be talking to you soon and I'll, um, I'll be looking at that, whatever the language is about. Whether or not we got sufficient notice on the lane and the polish up and getting back a, a good notice, so. Get in their pocket. Take care of us, but you too.
Who wants to go first? Uh, BFNS.
All right, I can start us off.
There we go.
Um, I can start with the Hawks Nest project construction update. I had a conversation with Mr. Koppik Friday morning and then I visited the site. Today, uh, Midwest Mole was on site, so I got to discuss what their schedule was and then. Um, started off at the plant, the two new structures have been set at the wastewater plant, not completed. Uh, that's waiting for the pipe to come across Prots Rock Road and connect into it. Uh, but there was some pot mulling that was performed last week and I believe some work was performed Sunday. As well to locate water, gas and other utilities on the site there, so. And some of them have been located, I haven't gotten full feedback from contractor on if there's more. To be located down there or not, but a lot of it has been located. That's needed so we know what utility to be across when the pipe comes across the room. Um, met with Midwest Mole, um, that last run from Muncie to the plant is about. Two thousand feet, they've got about half of that pipe installed now, so they're almost to that electrical easement with pipe. Um, they drilled further than that, so they're another five or six hundred feet to the east, closer to the plant with the drill. So that's where they drilled the pilot hole, then they'll pull the pipe through that point. Uh, so they've got about six hundred feet left to drill. They anticipate they'll have that completed end of the week and then they'll be pulling pipe uh, the rest of the way next week. Tentatively Midwest Mole thinks they may be done pulling pipe by the end of next week.
Two weeks from now, more or less.
More or less, two weeks from now, Midwest Mole projects that'll be done with the pipe installation. Uh, that would get them to the plant and then the connection would happen at the plant there. Uh, for the lift station, the lift station structure, so the, the concrete structure has been delivered. It's up on the site now, um, uh, Rock and Dirt's got two large excavators out there. I've not heard when that installation's supposed to be happening, but they're not. They don't need to wait for Midwest Mole guidance to take place. So hopefully that's happening soon and I've not gotten anything from Rock and Dirt on when that should start. We're trying to coordinate a progress meeting within the construction move, uh, this week to get an update on that.
And any electrical work occurs after?
That needs to happen after the structure has been set, um, they be getting in each other's way if they're trying to. For concurrent with the structure being set.
Any? Yeah, okay, nevermind.
Yeah, I've not gotten a further update from um, his electrical subcontractor and that would be done either, but that needs to happen after the structure's set.
Any idea on E T, uh, completion?
Okay, based on what I'm seeing is end of August, August fifth appears to be. Appears to be, but I've not gotten my verbal confirmation or written confirmation without still.
I think after they deliver their bid. I mean, I, I mean, I've been on this one. I've been here a couple times, I've seen it there, that does.
Anything else on it?
That's all I have, Blue Hawks Nest.
Yeah, what can you say? Thank you, questions in the back?
Yes, and I appreciate um, all of your, we have the nest of trying to make this happen. I, I guess. I question, I've been here four or five times now, I've seen Matt Lons as a council rep. I thought they're, you know, not only council, it's our council rep in our neighborhood. What needs to happen, I mean, can we, uh, we've got dual things happening here, he's not here. For the council meeting. And he's not working on the project and you cold called whoever the in-between guy was last time. And they delivered stuff, but that is it, that's all, the whole entire month it happened since then. Not talking about mole.
I've seen topics, people's not there at all.
For another month, so this has been two months now.
It's, we are as frustrated as you are.
I guess maybe I should ask that Eric. When he was here.
How do you get him off the board? Someone can.
Or he resigns.
When is that?
Two years.
There's a requirement that you have to show up to many meetings.
And no requirements at all?
I don't think so. Yeah, exactly. I don't know, maybe there, is there a? I'm sorry, say again?
Can you ask him to resign?
Yeah.
He's not gonna show up, I mean, maybe he'll just resign and then, and replace him.
He'd probably be happy to.
Okay. Uh, just keep in mind that we are on YouTube, okay, so, um, and, um. Yeah, okay, um, sure, uh, Ron, you think it's skeptical, I, I'll mention it to him, yeah, absolutely.
And I have been back, did you get back there, how bad is it? Along all the weeds and stuff that, since you talk like.
Somebody, uh, went back either last, last week or. Had to be last week and moved.
So you were back there at one point? And since you've been back there, our company has been, that we hired a do the park, they've been back there.
Okay, but somebody around where the structure's gonna sit.
Oh, I don't know about that.
The big pile of wood and brush, someone moved all the way around it.
Okay, then that's, yeah, no, I don't know. It wasn't me.
Well, I think I was at Hawks Nest Lift Station working on it. And I think it was Bob Ken, so that would have been Matt's guys.
That was probably the same day they were delivering everything, because there, there was a part of their equipment out there. And I haven't seen you almost every day for that lift station working on it.
Where are we at with this, um?
I guess, do you want to talk about?
I'll do that. Our next item, yeah, yes, sir.
So after the project is deleted, so I live along the, the park and Shawnee Ridge as well. So there is currently about a two foot drop from my property down to this road that has been cut for this project. Is that going to be fit to how it was?
I'm gonna make every effort of it to be returned to its natural state. And if I understand right, there's a contingency fee that the contractor won't get paid till everything is. Put back the way it was originally. Now, I could be wrong on that, but that's my understanding. Chris, do you have any insight on that?
I've not been back to that section, but there's supposed to be surface restoration to put things back to.
So was that a slope? It was.
And kind of sloped down to the pond.
Yeah.
So like from our properties, as you walk out, it was just kind of flat and then force the pond, it starts to slope.
Right.
But that, now it just drops down. Yeah.
That's a harsh drop.
I've fallen back there.
Rains too, like my kids can't go back there for a week at a time, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm moving a hundred percent, it needs to be returned to a hundred percent or better than what was before and, and, uh. Question.
One more, so when you do go back there, it used to be. I mean, there was no water standing now from, well, it's kind of between yours and Kristen's, isn't it? There's, there's a really wet marshy spot and then down by Stephen Cathy Easters, which is. Right next to, yes.
Let's be sure that we get together and identify all your issues.
We've taken some pictures.
Well, and he's been writing also so that we can convey those concerns to Greg Marks, okay? And.
So would it be like a punch list that we can be a part of?
Yes, absolutely. As a thing, I just caught you, I'm sorry about that.
It's right here.
You're gonna ask him if he would resign, whatever, but it's not gonna get the project done.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, you know, you, you can do whatever, but it's not gonna get the project done.
You're absolutely right. So. It will convey things as. This tenant of the population.
Also, you might want to put a bug in people's ears that are from that area. That we would love to have somebody if he does resign, it was somebody in that position that would.
Step up.
Yes.
Because we will have to interview somebody to. Or replacement, so. Something to be aware of if, if there is an opening on the board, but only time will tell on that. Um, Steve, do you have a question?
No, I'm just counting there, there's four that could probably be on the board.
So more, more of a comment, right, so while everything is torn up down there. You know, when Battleground Annex Shawnee Ridge, back in, was it fourteen, fifteen, somewhere in that timeframe? I was on HOA board at the time, Perry was on the board at the time. Battleground had expressed that you guys would take over the neighborhood's pond and dredge it. And we have heard nothing of the sort since then. And I mean, if you go down there now, I mean, obviously there is eight foot tall cat tails, it's not really a pond, it's just a bog. It's a really bad thing, so obviously while everything's torn up right now, it would be a phenomenal time to at least have that discussion, bring that up. And kind of put that back on a bit more.
Glad you brought it up.
Drainage pond, it's not, I mean, it's meant for that drainage, that big town.
But if there's an infestation problem with mosquitoes and other, uh, Ron can put. Whatever. Yeah, um. That will diminish the habitat or mosquitoes, so.
But I think it's, uh, there's no place for the water to go because of already moved this drain down. There is.
Let's get it squared away when everything's done. Or is it?
It used to be full of water, it used to be full, like when I bought my house, Realtor even said, hey. You know, they stocked the pond, which that's never happened, but you know, you could go down there and fish.
Yeah.
I bought it, I bought my home four years ago and it's not been great since I've been there, but.
I want to verify it's not because of the current project happening that it's holding water. Or.
Yeah, it's both.
It is, it works because of the project?
Yes.
Just to understand what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
So it's worthwhile to have that, that conversation, keep that up, but yes, it's, it's a good time to take care of it, you know, if we can. Uh, any other questions, counselors?
Update on the Gateway Project, um, so for the. For everyone's knowledge, we received uh, proposal packets from three potential developers last Friday. Those have been passed out to the scoring committee. Uh, the scoring committee will then start working through those and ranking the different developers based on the set of scoring criteria. That process will be happening over the next couple of weeks and then. Hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have had an opportunity to interview potential developers. Have a preliminary uh, selection of a developer. After that point, there's a public hearing and other processes that need to be go, need to be. Um, proceeded through for the official selection of a developer and that initial agreement with them, that's. Proceeding well, um, in the meantime, we're working on our, um. Next agreement for the full design of the Gateway Project, that includes survey, utility coordination. Right away engineering, right away services, permitting, engineering design, everything to get you to the point where you have that. Um, guaranteed maximum price and we're ready to start construction, so, um, working with our other. Uh, design teams and a few other subs to get that agreement together and we should have that for you for consideration. So it seems to be progressing uh, pretty well, we got three packets, um. From first reading, they're complete, so that's a good start, I'm excited to see how the committee thinks about this.
So we have the scoring committee meeting to develop their scores and then according to my calendar, which I hopefully copied correctly. Uh, August eighth is when we're supposed to have the recommendations done.
Right, and I believe that's your next meeting, isn't it?
That's on Friday, the eighth is on a Friday.
Okay, so.
And the meeting, the, is it only eleven, but. I guess you will let us know, I, I mean, that, that date seems fluid to have a meeting on Friday, I don't know.
Yeah, no, that was more of a sometime before then, so.
Okay.
Um, you know, maybe here, probably take you, we'll discuss it with the story committee meeting, I would anticipate. Two weeks to review each proposal, uh, give us a week to interview different developers and then. Have another discussion, so that, some of those might take a day, some of it might take half a day. That's a sliding.
Yeah.
It was more intent by the eighth, we have our.
Okay, thank you. Anything else more, more worth?
I don't think so, Dave, we're calling, I guess.
We'll update you when we hear back from you and H. There's, there's, and I was telling Chris, there's multiple things that are gonna start happening in parallel paths that have to sink.
There's there's and I was telling Chris this, there's multiple things that are gonna start happening in parallel paths that have to sync up with. Certain steps, certain milestones to not get a cart in front of the horse. And the the financial component, the bond ordinance, second reading earlier. Um this evening, uh, design and permitting process. Um and then the selection process integrates with with all three of those kind of needing to happen in the right sequence and at the right times, so. It could get busy.
Yeah. Counselors, any questions for representatives from the NS? Okay. Well, thank you for your information and your reports. Onto the minutes. Any questions on?
I'd like a motion to the seven minutes from June nine.
Motion for Steve on seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor of the minister? I I I motion passes, thank you, councilors. Um Georgia.
You have the. Links. They'll never sit down. On. The loan for the Ox Nest. One of the months that we pay that is July. And July is also the. Month that we. Transfer six months of the waste treatment plant. Bond to SRA. So you have those two very large numbers. For a total of three hundred and ten thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents.
First two in the minute.
I don't wanna be a hawk. It does come back to mind too.
Fair enough.
Okay.
If if you want to do that.
I'd like to make a motion. To accept the uh claims report from June tenth to July fourteenth. Twenty twenty five at the amount. Of three hundred and ten thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and eighty cents.
Motion by Mary Jo, second by Chad. Uh, any discussion, councilors? All favor say on?
I.
I thank you, councilors, motion passes.
The other item under my section was the utility bill. We had a work session on the sewage. Questions around sewage. Utility payment. And the minimum bill concept is a minimum bill. Only if the water is on and being used or is the minimum bill. A mechanism that provides a base amount to the operating budget every month. Whether or not there's anybody residing at the property. Using water. Is it between owners? Is it? A landlord situation where there's no tenant at that time instead of. Property that is the water's on, but it doesn't, it's not. Can't nobody's moving down that center construction. That's it. People who are just out of town for six months for whatever reason. So those questions came up and we kind of kicked them around. We don't have to decide today. But and before our great. Consultant can go forward. To set us up for the financing, how we're gonna pay for the gateway. Project. That is a question that would need to be answered because it informs how we receive our revenue. And more important than that, it informs how I train people in the office, what they tell customers. When they say, well, I want to shut my water off while I'm out of town. Or does that? Mean that your revenue for the sewage plant also stops or are you gonna? Consider yours a base. Amount that. They still owe because it contributes to the operating expenses to make the service available.
Did a couple of counselors need to discuss this?
Have a working committee, but we didn't. I don't recall that we set down. Any decision.
We were just going through the explanations.
And maybe the committee wants to add your consent to the others um. At this meeting, how you how you view it, how you would make that call right now. What questions you have?
Yeah, I found the way that Indiana American Water does it is a more equitable for money. They charge like a fifteen dollar connect fee per month. And then after that, it's gallons used as opposed to a minimum of charging two thousand gallons a month. Uh, this is as Georgia mentioned, we do have some residents that don't even use two thousand gallons of water. Right, and so they're getting charged for two thousand gallons of water using not even half of that. Uh, so the fifteen dollar connect fee would help cover some of our operating costs for them. It would. Would lessen the burden of wanting to use nine percent of that one. Could be a bit of a middle ground for order, collecting no money versus collecting somehow. Yeah.
Obviously, we'll have to have more discussion, right? So. Thanks for the input.
That's good.
I guess we'll table it for discussion later, so that we're gonna talk about the budget, we have more to fresh out. Wonderful. Anything else, Georgia?
Um, yeah, there's no discussion on that. I mean, that's the other things are the. UZO amendments, we could do those now or they can come up under area then.
Well, maybe I jumped it on. Do you want to discuss the water building structure right now, just for a little bit or?
Be nice to get it out of the way, but that's one less thing. To worry about.
And so what are the, well, uh, what are the choices?
I kind of agree with what Chad's saying.
Yeah, we we could run the idea of if we collect nothing. You know, I guess how many, it depends on how many houses we're actually talking about here, but. If we can't make our budget. For what it costs to run the wastewater plant.
So piece of information I'm interested in then is how many houses are we talking about?
But that's that's an unknown right now. I don't know. So.
Georgia, can you? Give us a feel, not right now necessarily, but.
Yeah, what are the data points that are important to you? Right now, our system. Our rate ordinance was set up. On the fact that. Every household was gonna be. Paying the minimum bill.
Which is thirty eight dollars one, right?
So if we go down to fifteen, how many, I mean. How many houses are there? That don't use.
Well, it's gonna restructure everything.
Yes.
Because. If you, and we do have in the older section of town, you have a lot of people that don't use two thousand gallons. So if it's important to do that, then we need to. Sit down and do the profile of water use. I have a table and it has. How many hundred houses use less than two thousand gallons and how many hundred houses use between two and four thousand and how many use over four thousand? And that's how we got the rate levels for um. Where the rate changes, the more that you use, it goes down a little bit. And cost per thousand gallons. So it will change that. That's probably the rate per thousand for the lower tier will go up a little bit. Because you're gonna have to achieve about the same or higher revenue. It's just how are you gonna pay for it? And the question was initially, if you're not using water, are you gonna pay anything sewage? That was the biggest question in my mind. Are you satisfied with not taking any revenue that someone's not using water?
But there's abandoned house up here. He's not using water. I mean, how's that true?
It's not paying any.
Water or sewage. I mean.
Is paying stormwater because that runs with the property.
Yeah, yeah.
And some rate structures. Set the sewer to be with the property as well because you can't shut it off.
Can't shut it off. Yeah, we can't shut sewer either. Like your sewer's always connected to the house. Well, so is your water.
Some communities.
But you can turn the water off that, or you shut the water off the road. Yeah.
State statute allows you to bill a property owner, you lean a property owner for sewage bills. But not water because water is a product. And there's a sales tax associated with it. So it has to be paid and if you're gonna capture that, you have to go to small claims court and. But um you can do a lien for wastewater and stormwater.
Thoughts?
Sounds mean just can take more just here at this meeting. That if we make any changes at all, and we have to to.
Yeah, if I can show you. But it'll be, it'll be time consuming and costly to show you exactly what everybody would pay. So I'm more interested in what is. Fair in your mind. And is it okay to not capture anything? For minimum bill? When somebody says, hey, I just want to shut my water off for six months while I'm out of town. If it's. Okay for that, then it's probably enough. It's okay for that, then it's probably okay for a landlord who's between tenants. Where no one's using water to not pay. So I have to know where it stops.
But a landlord, if a landlord, he's gonna pay a connection and reconnection with you. So it's really not.
You don't get it. For sewer, it's always on. You don't have a reconnect.
Yeah, yeah, but.
So you you don't, you don't, don't get anything then.
I'm curious, how how many people request to shut? The wastewater and their water off. For a six month period or a three month period, three month period seems fairly normal for snowbirds. But six months seems excessive to me.
Well, we had one this year because the person bought their house in this market when they could get it, but they didn't intend to move it right away. So it sat vacant for six months and we didn't collect any revenue off it.
But that was just one house. Well, that that's the other thing I think that's important to know is how many houses sit there?
I don't wanna make a, I don't wanna change something based on the exception of the rule.
Right.
So.
But we are getting ready to do a rate review, which we only do once every three or five years. So I want to make sure that these questions are asked and answered. And we're okay going into.
Rates are gonna go down to match Indiana water right here. Now.
American suburban.
Yeah, wherever whoever it is, I mean, it's. Rates are high. I think all of us are are realizing that. You know, we're paying a lot. I'm paying two hundred dollars a month for water.
You go to Walmart and buy candy bars?
I do not, actually.
If you did, would you expect them to cost the same as they do at the little store if you don't plan?
I mean, that's it's convenience. Uh, am I having a convenience of? Multiple options for water? No, it is a consumption service.
This whole system has a certain level of overhead. That has way fewer participants to cover that overhead than American suburban has. So that part, it's. It's just not possible that we would need American suburbs. I mean, I agree that some conversation needs to be had about this. I do believe that a minimum. Uh, for having the service and the rest of it is based on the usage. Because it's a wastewater based on how much water is already flowing. It's a percentage of the water that's being used, correct? So if no water is being used, but you have a base amount like on a telephone, when we had landlines, we had to pay for the. The ability to have it.
Right.
So I don't have any problem with that. I my difficulty is paying for two thousand dollars or two thousand gallons where I lose fifty. And I'm paying more. Than the people who are doing four thousand. Per gallon. And I don't feel that that's appropriate. But that's another part of the issue. People who use it. Maybe they can conserve a bit more unless they're gonna pay more. And I understand it's it's a myriad issue, but I don't disagree with having a base amount just for having the service available. Because you're right, you can't turn it off. So take that to your group and discuss it.
Payback to Joe, Joanna's comments.
I actually appreciate those comments because we really do, all of us pay for that service to come to our homes. So at some point, you know. I know that in my hometown in Nebraska, some guy shut his off and he used a bathtub or a catheter. So we don't want that kind of stuff going on, what? It was awful.
I know, I mean, generally, we built our house back in twenty twenty. It's had abandoned five years before we. We did it. We had to redo all the sewer lines coming to the house because they were all, water stopped flowing and so we we buried, we put like K thousand dollars in the sewer license. To redo all of it. We built our house. So.
Can we move on?
Can we do a special meeting for this one?
Of course. We'll get together on that, Dave. What's what's next here, folks? Uh, Georgia, are we, are you still up?
No, that was a online.
We're first, we're we're session review. Uh, okay, Mr. Moir then. If we're moving on, are we moving on, councilors?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Moyers, we're already weak. No, I'm sorry. I'll be forced. Thank you for staying around.
Uh, for the police department, the. Uh, sorry. The police department, the uh. Fiddler's event was obviously recently, we had car problems at the absolute worst time possible to do that. Two cylinders. Went bad in one of our, one of our two cars. Uh. We had a quote for about three thousand dollars from the dealer. Um, we got another quote that we accepted as an emergency repair uh that was six hundred and twenty three dollars, so. Pace to. Up around. The uh Fiddler's Gathering, we had. Uh, pretty good event except for just a little bit of weather at the beginning and we were very careful this year on how we structured things. So the for the the council's knowledge, uh. The Fiddler's Event pays private security. They pay officers to work as essentially private security contractors. Uh, I just as the first year, we didn't do this Fiddler's last year, the event, so the way that I felt. Based on a couple of years, about three years ago, with with some issues was to uh. The concern was that what time is paid by Fiddlers and what time is paid by the town? And so to avoid that completely. Uh, I split it up by the individual, so I myself didn't work for Fiddlers at all. I only worked for the town. Doing patrol activities. Uh, the other officers filled in and only worked for Fiddlers. In that way, there was no. Discrepancy of what time were you on if you, you know, something happened or were injured and uh we're gonna take a call. So that uh that actually worked out. Pretty darn well. Um, former Marshall Burke, they hired him to do the parking, so that was able to be separate from us. Not sure about the staff, but uh. It was wrong. But it it worked out pretty pretty well to have that that divide. Um, so while um. That may not work. Always in the future, it worked out this year uh and being down in Carrow, so. Helped with that. Uh. Lot of people pulled over then, uh, two arrests, uh, me to arrest during that time with Fiddlers, but. Nothing directly related to the event. It's pretty mellow. It's it's more problems coming into the event. Uh. We do have a uh dedication of service party arranged, uh, finally, finally locked down, uh, with TC's, uh, July twenty seventh. Two to five P M uh for Marshall Burke. Yeah. I I don't have an estimate. I've been texting him to get that. Um, so we will obviously have to say it's pending. What that estimate is, uh. So we. That'll have to probably be sent in the emails since that's. Uh, but I want people to be able to get it on their calendars. Uh, moving on, fourth of July, uh. People bought some pretty tame fireworks this year. I was kind of disappointed, so uh it it really was, there wasn't a a big. Uh, not very patriotic, gotta say, so uh, just kidding, but it they uh. We had no problems in town or whatsoever. It was. We had no problems in town whatsoever, it was um, other than running over those little snap firecrackers with the tires and thinking that I I had a hole in the tire, but, uh, we did get a letter from sheriff's department for that event, while things were very calm in the battleground, they were absolutely chaos in the county. Uh, there was a house fire that unfortunately resulted in fatal injuries. Uh, we have a uh an email from the sheriff's department from one of their sergeants that you have with you, just thanking battleground and other uh, the town marshal agencies for their assistance, um, all deputies had to go to deal with that, uh, fire. Um, and that left the entire county open, uh to to calls that couldn't be responded to, and so we had to fill in for them, which is really only fair since they cover about three fourths of our time out here, uh, to be able to give back a little and um, just their appreciation for that is in that letter, uh, they they're unfortunately, the with, related to the officer that sent this letter, um, his canine just passed away today, uh, and they just had, that's why I stepped over the door, they had a last call on the radio for it, uh, his name's Ken War Dog, it's Hungarian name. Uh, but I just wanted to make a formal comment on the minutes that that dog did provide great service to battleground. And uh, that that canine officer passed away, so, um. And that was Robert Luke, that's the handler, for the for the minutes, uh, the couple of concerns that I, uh, that I see. I, I obviously we've got some houses that have tall grass, uh, I feel it's a little hypocritical right now for me to ticket those when I've got weeds at one oh seven. And so that's of of, I just believe we gotta keep our house in line before we pick on neighbors, so um, I I think, I'm gonna get the name of this machine wrong, I think it's called a drag car, that would help with that, maybe is that, there's a that thing you pull the tractor, it will gravel lots that will bury the weeds or kill, dig the weeds under.
What's one oh seven?
One oh seven, uh, railroad street, the new location, please permit. Uh, yeah, right by TC's. And so uh, I don't know what we need to do, but the weeds grow pretty quick there, um, we've had Pearson Recovery Service, a a a towing agency that that serves law enforcement, come out without being asked by us just to be nice and mo it for us, which is obviously above and beyond any, uh, uh cold duty there, but, um, we don't ask you as a charge and we all take whatever help I can get. Uh, but I think it would be nice if we were either able to to dig somehow deal with that. It it's really, it's weeds, it's not grass, uh, or or add gravel to it, and then uh, I feel like it'd be more fair than to enforce the grass height everywhere else, so. I do have, uh, two officers that are in the process now to be, uh, taking up reserve spots. In the past, uh, we've had, at least in one picture, we've had, I think there's nine reserves, so I'm I'm looking at two, um. Both have investigator knowledge, one thirty years plus, just retiring from their agency, wanting to stay in it, and so uh, I'd like to seek the board's approval to open up two more reserve spots for that. Uh, these gentlemen come with a lot of their own equipment, which we can get by with with reserves more than we can uh, paid officers, so that's that's another perk of that, and they can share some of them, so. Um, I don't know if that's something that more needs to vote, or if you can just let me know your thoughts one way or another.
What, uh? Well, you you're gonna have to explain it more, I mean, what?
Sure, so there's two, uh, I'd like to add two reserve officers, unpaid officers.
Unpaid, okay.
Yeah, uh, to to the roster, um, reserve officers are used in many, many agencies around the state. Uh, they don't have the same, uh uh, uh, same equipment budget requirements as a, uh, patrol officer, they can, but in our situation, they're fortunately, they're they're officers th- themselves that are retiring and have a lot of appointment, uh, so they would still share some, but I'm wanting to bring them in for their own specialties that they each have, uh. One has more experience in, uh, elderly, uh, exploitation crimes, the other one has a lot of experience in civil forfeiture, meaning that you pursue search warrants and things, and then you're you're doing a civil suit if if equipment was involved in a crime, which brings back money to.
Anything else on that, councilors?
Yeah. We would have, we would have to make motions, not pay.
Yeah, this would impact your insurance, because I would need their information, just like they were an employee, and we give that to your insurance because you're covered under, uh, the liability.
So you need a motion?
Yeah, that, we're in comp.
Well, we need to just have look at the financial implications by our insurance provider. So can you take care of that, to see what two additional employees, so to speak, was how that would impact the insurance coverage?
They they look at typical, like, scheduled hours. Your reserve officer that got now, I don't have schedules for that, but.
Yeah, I that. I anticipate it to be pretty minimal right now, just because it's a they'd be helping more than investigating situation when that would come up, rather than, uh, just working the road.
If they're they're on the roster and they're on duty, then they have the same, they're covered under the same hazard and, um, liability and personal enemy that you're paying employees.
On first blush, I think it's a good idea. Uh, Chad, you're.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I've got to make a motion to, uh, personal reserve officers.
Motion by Chad, second with Steve on. Any any further discussion? I guess not, all in favor, say aye.
Well, we don't, you thought in the many.
They'll have to be determined, but like I said, they come with a lot of their own equipment, and and because they're not looking in the true uh, out here day after day in a patrol capacity, uh, they're, like I said, I'm 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 pursuing certain skills and trying to get a diverse array of skills so that we we have that if needed, um, then I I don't anticipate there being a lot there, uh, however, I will also say that the approval's nice, but it's also dependent on passing background checks and doing the full process, I just don't wanna waste time. And if the positions aren't there, if that makes sense.
Do they also carry their weapons?
Oh, that's right, yeah, they're, yeah, they're sworn officers, they have the same powers as as I do.
Okay.
Now, they'll be working with one of the deputies, you?
Uh, I mean, it depends on the situation, like I.
No, I mean, they'll be driving a car, right?
If they're driving a car, they would, they would work as an officer with, so, uh, the with the two specific individuals that are, uh, uh, in the process now, that like to start in the process, they are already career-long police officers, they're, um, uh, they're not uh, new hires that we need to go to an academy or reserve academy. So, um, so that's an advantage there, uh, the, and I'm happy to take more questions, but, um. Uh, I also would like to propose removing the golf cart fee, and the reason that I propose removing the fee is it's twenty dollars and it takes about thirty dollars of labor to arrange and collect, uh, I would have been central, but the math doesn't work still, so uh, it it's, there are a lot of expenses for getting your golf cart ready or that to be legal with our ordinance, uh, when you, if they don't, if they buy a golf cart, I've been told by um, some of the community members that have golf carts that are already compliant, that those golf carts new cost between like sixty-eight thousand dollars that are the essentially street legal golf cart, uh. If they don't have one of those, then they spend, he said, between six, six to eight hundred dollars on, or five day, even I think it was on lights, um, mirrors, uh, uh different turn signals, different requirements, I I don't know that the twenty dollars is what's, uh the holdup, it's just kind of a logistical process that's.
Well, I guess, though, it puts them through the inspection part of it. You see what I'm saying? That it guarantees that when they get on the road that nobody will get hurt, nobody will, you know, like they have the turn signals, so.
Yeah, it wouldn't guarantee no one get hurt for for the. Uh, I, we we do enforce that already with things like bicycles, with, you know, lights on or reflectors, uh, at night. If we see something that's not compliant, we stop it already, uh, i- i- if you wish to continue the inspection, uh policy, that's that's fine, or ordinance, that's fine, um. Or we can have the requirement set in ordinance, what are required to have a golf cart on the roadway, and if it's seen and it's not compliant, then we deal with it. If you have a if you have a a registered roster, I'm thinking of expenses, if you have a registered roster of what golf carts are compliant you you really do need to have, you you buy stickers that go on it, and those are custom stickers. Uh, I think we were using literally bicycle registration stickers that we would cut up. I would like to either do away with that or make it more professional, one or the other. So, and those are gonna obviously have a cost to them.
What they put on before, for the sticker?
Bicycle stickers that were cut, that had the bicycle word cut off of it. So.
Well, I I really think they need inspected, and you need headlights, taillights, turn signal. They get it out here on Main Street or whatever, I mean, they're.
Yeah, this is, this is a poor decision.
Inspecting, right? The problem is, people aren't bringing them into.
Yeah, so we're already enforcing it anyway, yeah.
His citation.
Uh, it it could be up to fifty dollars.
There you go, you make more money if they're not in compliance, you catch them fifty bucks than paying the twenty dollars that you want that, I mean, you're.
What else? Inspected, they don't have headlights, taillights, guess what, you'll be working.
Already pulling them over if they don't have the headlights and the taillights and the turn signals, right?
Just like any vehicle, if it's not compliant, we stop it, so.
And then get a ticket, then they have to pay the ticket, and you're making, I mean.
It just makes it more similar to traffic enforcement, as it is, and let's pull a radio. We're not pulling them over to determine compliance, we're pulling them over when we see that there's something that. All right, but, uh, but again, that would be a posted ordinance, people would have to know what's required of them, right, to to do that. Um, it this, I am enforcing it, I'm not creating it, so obviously, it's it's at your.
Well, it is posted. I mean, it is, it's in our ordinance.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm I'm that's, I'm presenting this as an option for you.
I mean, is there a large quantity of golf carts using roads?
No.
I don't even see a whole lot in our neighborhood.
If you live on the way to school.
One over the school is a freewheeler that he goes to the ball field, that's the only one I've ever seen around.
Primarily, they're the old birds, aren't they?
Yeah.
I've seen a lot of few.
Yeah.
Going on the art street.
Yeah, because they come from town.
Couple times I see where little teenage kids are driving.
Yes, they are.
So.
So, wh- what I've heard is that, um it's a burden to certify these.
Not really, it's not a burden, it's a, it's just, I don't think it's the most efficient and cost-effective system, and so my job is to present that.
And and you're enforcing safety issues already, so, um, as I recollect, were we was this implemented be, so we could kinda keep track of who had?
Make sure they have insurance, to make sure they have working breaks and lights and turn signals.
But it had nothing to do necessarily with inventory, how many, it was like a registry with the old orders. Ensuring more safety features, right?
We charge a dollar worth certificate to have a garage sale, not because we're making a lot of money, but just because at some point, if somebody abuses the system, then you got something in place to say, here you go.
I don't know, I have to agree with what Carrie said, to a degree, that, hey, the economics, hey, if they're stupid enough to go out and be not within parameters of safety, they get sidetracked.
The other concern I have is that we're using, like I said, we're using a sticker that was designed for a different type of uh, vehicle, bicycle, um, and like, I don't know that we'd be able to spot a, uh, a golf cart that every officer knew was, had gone through this, uh, possibly, but, um we probably wouldn't see the sticker necessarily right away, um, so we'd still be getting up behind it, looking at it, seeing what's going on.
So, councilors, Georgia.
I was gonna say, the, um, the only thing I can think of that we do in the office that is also, you can't really tell us, the backflow devices, there's a year yearly inspection required for a backflow device, and we have a list of people that have them. And we send them a letter and say, get your backflow device checked by this date. And so they get it done, I mean, that would be the thing that you would have to do with golf carts, once a year, should send everybody from that registered. The same. Make sure you're in compliance.
I'm, I I don't, I don't care, but I do think that, uh, if it continues, we need to get an official sticker, you know, something that's designed for.
Maybe custom printed, weatherproof, weatherproof reflective sticker would cost a little bit, I I don't have a personal, uh, this is not the creating problems for the officers or anything, I just feel it's my job to tell the board if I see something that's, or doing that's not efficient or can be done better.
Books said they don't even allow them to town. Lucky, most likely, they don't even allow them, so they could just say no.
Allow what?
Golf carts, could just say, no, you can't use them on the street.
It it's a different story at the bridge then.
That would take. Nobody would have trouble.
That's been delivered, then, I, if you wanna take action, otherwise, it was one.
Move on.
Uh, the just planted a couple seats for expenses that we are absolutely gonna have to have, um on our computer currently, um, I, uh, our computer is, uh, not capable of realistically not capable of reviewing video and pictures from hard drives, it's not able to be upgraded to Windows eleven, uh.
And so, we don't have the support cover. So we'll get security updates if anything else, yeah, in October and May.
So that essentially puts us kinda dead in the water to be able to review any digital evidence, which uh, is, OT does is quite prevalent right now, so, um.
So how soon do you need it?
ASAP, as soon as possible, yeah, I mean, it really it was a problem, so that's, that's one thing, uh, the other is, um we, we have a few things that have to go in vaults, uh, drug evidence, money evidence, and the ammunition, uh, firearms go in a vault, really, those things should be separated, uh, because we do, uh we've had a lot of drug seizures lately, the vault is, uh, as packed as well, one, two people shut it, one keeps their hand in to try to keep the stuff from falling into the other shuts, so uh, we cannot fit anything else, as you probably can tell from the odor that comes through there sometimes. Uh, we can't fit one more stem inside there, so, um. So we're, that's something that we're gonna have to look at purchasing now, another vault for it, it has to be in a vault.
So can we discuss your financial needs off the record outside the meeting?
Well, it is, if it's over five hundred dollars. Not in his budget, he just needs you to say you approve him to make the purchase, do you have a vote for your computer?
I do not, that's why I was hoping to work with, uh.
Is, you do use a Rugged Eyes top book for anything like that, or what are you using in your vehicle?
Uh, oh, we've got a, uh, Dell rugs, that's what we use, but they, they're, they were grant funded and buried down.
Yeah, sure, I just wanna make a.
If I can work with you on that, to try to, and so I'm planning to see today so that I can bring this to you next month. I really, but I didn't want to be the first time you've heard it, next month.
The vault that you're talking about? What, did you move our vault to the other place too?
So the, there's a a vault that we've had here, the one that's over there is a pass-through wall vault that was, uh, that I got for free with grant funding, it was about eight thousand dollars, uh, and that will create a room uh, for evidence, that's a essentially a vaulted room, within that vaulted room, we still have evidence requirements that we keep uh, drug evidence and money evidence, uh, separate from other evidence, uh, within that room. We also will need essentially an armory, which for our department size is just a gun vault uh, to be able to keep those things locked up. And and right now, what we're doing, which is not really kosher, is, uh, we're putting, uh the armory for the department ammunition firearms with, uh, that belongs to the, the police department belongs to the town with illegally with with illegal evidence, drug evidence, um, and, uh, money evidence, which is not a a good way at all to do that, but we just, we got to.
How long do you have to keep them drugs?
Depends where the prosecutor says we get rid of them, so, uh, it's prosecutor question, depends on the case. When they say we can destroy the evidence, when we officially say it, we destroy it, we don't go before that. That's our job too.
Back to your computer, what do you think that's gonna cost?
I have no idea. A ruggedized laptop, usually roughly around thirty-two to thirty-six hundred dollars. I think I say thirty thousand dollars.
That's, that would do a lot of, uh, we're, what we're really need of is the desktop.
Oh, desktop, okay.
And the laptops, they're.
We can get desktop a lot cheaper. Um, we can probably get a desktop for a lot of dollars, that will do what it needs.
And Georgia, I wasn't sure that, were you suggesting that that doesn't come out of DJ's budget, or?
Yeah, it does, but if, if it's a purchase over, isn't it five hundred dollars? That you have to get.
Board approval.
Yeah. So it's just equipment, or any purchase over five hundred dollars, just. Rent it by the board, says, yeah, you can, you can, sounds reasonable, you do that.
I have a Dell Premier Council in the city of Lafayette for the IT department, I can generate quotes for Dell. Uh, do you wanna prove enough to serve them out? You need a laptop, a desktop or?
But I'm in dire need of a desktop, uh, the laptops are just pretty simple.
And, uh, a laptop, it will be upgraded when it's eleven?
Uh, yeah, you would, the laptops are currently able to be upgraded when it's eleven, the, uh, desktop was never able to be upgraded when it was.
Um, my only question is, if I could flip the laptop, we possibly could upgrade the hard drive.
So I did do that already.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah. That was circa two thousand eighteen, I think, so.
Desktop for a thousand under that, I would say.
Like to make motion to approve up to fifteen hundred dollars for a new desktop for the police station.
Motion my marriage, yes, second to Stephen, I'm all favor, any discussion? Wouldn't know. Would you prefer a, like a tower PC?
Prefer to discuss it with you and show you what we're trying to do too, in that way.
Okay.
We can look along until.
Motion then for, uh, all favor say, I, I, I motion passes, thank you, councilors. They should get part of it going.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Moving on then, a- any questions for Ron, any more questions? Thank you, just testing it. Passing, uh, Mr. Ron, you're up.
All right, the, uh, right now, the biggest thing I have to bring as a counsel, it is. Once again, we're down to Lord Pulp, that Pulp's nest. Um, all last week and beginning of this week up to today, we've. Went through all scenarios. Uh, we've tested the vacuum, we've switched out parts, we tested electric today. Everything's running currently, the way it should. Uh, the pump will not, uh, will not prime though. Uh, so which kind of brings us to the motor itself.
I'm gonna testify a little bit, we've got the level up so high, we know it's pretty close to the pump.
And it still wouldn't prime, usually the higher the wet well, the quicker it'll prime. It's still not primed, we get ran, we, so it overflows at ten five, we ran it up to nine eight. Today, and it still wouldn't prime. So my dilemma. Is I have a company come out, pull the pump, send it off. Uh, it'll be gone for three or four weeks. Uh, and it's gonna be anywhere from three to five thousand dollars. Uh. Where I'm having the hardest time is, is, I guess that everything aligns perfectly, and Matt gets it done in five weeks. Then I've just spent three to five thousand dollars on a pump, that I'm gonna use for a week. So, I mean.
Okay, so in that pump, if it's, it's gonna be rebuilt? Can you re-use that pump someplace else?
I'm sure.
But what happens if Matt doesn't finish, something happens?
Who your back, uh, comes in?
So I, I discussed that with Matt today, uh. As emergency measure, what we would do is, uh. Dig down to get to the pipe, and we put in a bypass. I mean, you're gonna have to have a backer for a little bit, uh, but within a couple hours, we could probably cut in a. Bypass and run our four inch diesel pump. Uh. Ideal, no. Uh. But. I. I guess I'm looking for items, because it just, to me, there's no win-win here. I mean, i- if, if. If I send this pump off, and it takes three to four weeks, and we use it for a week, can we spend thirty five thousand dollars? I look like an idiot.
No, you don't.
Well, in my eyes, I do, because I've just spent that money.
You're dealing with circumstances, and you're making the best of it, so.
We, we have been running for two weeks with one pump. Uh, I will say with switching farts and doing everything, we do have pump two running better than it ever has. So, uh, I just.
I hate to see the worst case scenario happen, you know what I'm saying? Out of curiosity, how much does it cost for the bypass?
The bypass, we could, so we would cut it in ourselves, and I could probably. I mean, not using our own equipment, so I'm not gonna figure diesel and stuff like that, uh, parts. Probably listed five hundred.
Do you think that is fixed temporarily for five hundred bucks versus back rain?
So with that being said, yes and no. So you're gonna pay me to go out in the middle of the night and fire this pump, pump it down? So Hawksness is kicking on every about forty five minutes. The only benefit to run a trash pump is I can run that wet well all the way down to zero. Uh, with our pumps that we have in there now, you can only run it down to four foot, or you break something. So, I mean, that forty five minutes might extend to two hours. But, so you're gonna pay, you're paying it either him or I to come in every two hours. I mean, that's the one downfall.
Question, are you able to throttle that trash pump down so it doesn't pump as much? So it just kind of runs continuously, but, uh, at a, at a lower volume?
Uh, if the residents in Hawksness are understanding.
That we're back up in our houses, you better not do that, right? Like, is that a possibility, what he's talking about?
No, no, but you guys would hear, uh. Diesel motor running twenty four seven, and you guys probably wouldn't appreciate that either.
So, so there's two pumps, one of them's working right now.
Correct.
What if there's a failure of the work?
That's the one that runs every forty five minutes, right, the working one?
Yes.
So what, so what happens to us homeowners and what happens to fix the situation?
Nothing happens to you, the homeowners, what happens to the, we have a hydro vac truck come in. And pump it down and they take it someplace else.
There wouldn't be any.
So what's that cost?
Two hundred seventy five bucks an hour.
Minimum, right?
No, that's two hundred.
Like a hundred thousand dollars for a week of that.
Yeah.
Which is what happened over at Woods.
But I mean, on, on the other side of that, what says that if I pull this pump? Then we don't have a, can't start for two weeks. While it's stuck.
So you still need the emergency measures plan while it's gone.
I mean.
So you may have to do the bypass no matter what.
Yeah.
Or, or you have the hydro vac truck coming in and doing that. Yeah. So. So Ron is asking, some, some guidance here, uh, take our chances with pump two holding up. Pump two is still gonna hold up, uh, for the three weeks that it takes to get pump. One fixed or whichever one is failing, we still risk the possibility that we're gonna have the hydro vac truck come in. We still, uh, have the option of having it tee, tee into whatever he said.
We will cut in a.
Cut in a. Bypass, cut in a bypass, so we have two emergency solutions, if, if. The remaining pump fails, so that's hedged against time it takes to get pumped. With bad pump.
Hopefully.
Yeah, repaired in three weeks, personally, I'm not holding my breath, Matt's gonna get done before September. You know, that's just my take, you're right.
I mean, with something this important, why are they not legitimately working around the clock?
Because he doesn't have an inmate set, they did not sign that into their.
And this lady is right, because we took the advice of the attorneys. We took the advice of the engineering company, and they did not push to have performance clauses put into it. And.
So if there, are they in breach, can we hire?
They're, they're not in breach. It's an aggravation that we're.
It's a lesson that we learn.
Yeah, it's a, it's a painful education lesson, then Edward has pointed this out numerous times, rightly so. So, we're dealing with a situation we have at the moment, so Ron's, Ron's predicament is, well. What are the choices? He's explained the choices, he's looking for some.
Ron, if, can you, could you pay the pump guy an expediting fee, is that a choice? Thing of it is, is he sends it off. Uh, so he'll come pull the pump, and then he sends it on to another place, and it just, I mean, so there, there's like. Three or four in Indiana, so if there's like, you know, ten other towns in front. Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's not an option to expedite the repair of the pump, there's not, uh. And and the hardest thing, the last pump, so we, the last pump we had rebuilt was Northgate. Uh, it took four weeks, because the, the world we live in now. Uh. Getting parts, uh, the shipment, uh, most of your pumps are made overseas now. And that's, it, it just, it's hurting us.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Does the east side or west side have a pump like we have?
I would think that, I, I don't know, I would think theirs would be bigger.
And so that raises the question, I was thinking along those same lines, can we just buy a new pump? That drops into place. Can you investigate that?
I can look, it's a nineteen ninety station, so.
It is becoming absolutely.
Not knowing how long it would take to manufacture a pump to the specs that they need. My vote was to pull the pump, get it repaired, and. Hope that if he doesn't need to set it in place, that it has some salvage value. Through the repair shop for another organization that's like ours that has an old pump, I mean, I think if you advertise it. Out there, that eventually you could probably sell it to somebody and get something out of it.
Yes, so, um.
Could you ask the company to start repairing it? If we don't, if we get it back, we don't use it?
I think we should just go ahead and get it repaired. Okay. Any objections? ASAP, see if you can expedite it. Uh, see, see if they've got an extra that, a loaner. Anything else?
So, so the council knows, uh, Steve called to come out and look, uh, the. Old barn has been spray filled, it turned out very nice, uh. We are gonna be very picky. Now we put it back, it's gonna be a slow process. Because it's, it's not gonna be flooded like it was.
Good.
We have stepped back from forty years ago, and there, it's probably not gonna go back.
And, and you put Chance in and charged you that, huh?
Yes, I did.
Anything else, Ron?
This Hawksness. Sorry.
Okay, uh.
I forgot to, as soon as I stopped talking, I realized I forgot to ask, um, it was brought to my attention by, uh, Chief Deputy Townsend that his, uh. Pay increase had not gone in, was there anything that I'm missing that I need to submit in order for that increase to happen?
Did you give it to me in writing? Because I put it in their file, whenever there's a pay increase, the date was effective and the amount that you're. Authorizing them to have.
I didn't put it in writing because it was in the minutes, so.
From their file, I would like to have that, the date that is effective, which is the first day of any pay period. Be dated, it can be backdated with this next table.
Okay, because he had a increase to twenty seven fifty, a while back when he became a detective. Uh, he starts active, um. And he's still at twenty seven, and so, uh, and I wasn't sure what the crime was, but I wanna make sure I know all of them, so nothing is.
Well, and so the date that they passed, the ordinance, the, the date that they authorize it, isn't always the date that it starts. So that's why I asked for it in writing. The person's name, the date of the first pay period that it's effective and the amount that you're.
Okay, so. Yeah, okay, I, I, uh.
If it's. I know that we did a new salary events for the change in. Final.
Hmm, can he be? Uh, can this be paid? Yeah, retroactively, so back to him, okay.
Statement that you give me of which pay period, but.
Yeah.
Okay, good, uh. Everybody else here, my list so far, um. M- moving on then, Eric Plan of Redevelopment, uh, Mr. Chad, uh, or Georgia, whoever wants to handle these, uh, unified ordering amendments. Um, and revisions, if we can quickly summarize what's going on and.
Uh, of all the amendments that we talked about, only one really would potentially impact our ground, it would see, um. I believe it was one nineteen, which would relate to businesses or obsolete that would kennel or board kennels. Uh, apparently it was against county code to include a green space for those dogs to run. Uh, a fenced green space, so it's been amended now so that, uh, it is included that there would be a fenced green space for animals to run. If they're being boarded at a facility like that, so that's, not that there is a kennel in battleground, but if they're ever were, it can now include a green space.
And so we need to have a vote on that to accept, uh, accept that amendment.
Uh, I believe it was one nineteen.
You, you zone in on nineteen, yes.
Okay, so that one they did weirdly that you do sign. One hundred and number one twenty was information only and the action as required. There's no ordinance for manufacturing. Is one for amendment one twenty one, boarding kennels. Residential zones.
And that was.
But anytime there's one like that that changes, if they give it to us where they need signatures, you go ahead and pass. The ordinance.
So yeah, for.
Unfortunately, for one nineteen. If the signature start on, next to the last page, they didn't.
Oh.
We didn't, uh, force a page return so that all the signatures are on one page.
So that one was property in, in question within Lafayette, so it was a, uh. Basically double lot in, in the city of Lafayette, and, uh, developer came out, they submitted plans to build, uh, three duplexes. On that property, fit within the, uh, all guidelines of current code and everything, and so, uh, that was approved. Um, there's a lot of the, had easements from property lines, things like that, um, they're also in the family homes, I think, but then getting approved.
So those are the.
So.
Those in the same motion.
It's okay for me to do, if you wanna double them up, that's okay with me.
No, it's fine, you wanna do it.
Um, to accept ordinance number one twenty one, but what would be the? Twenty twenty five dash.
Uh, twenty twenty five dash six five three is one.
Six five three. And then, um, twenty twenty five dash six five two ordinances through. Bank mission.
Everybody understand that?
In my head, it sounded good. Like to pass the two ordinance. Like to pass the two ordinances. Do that make sense for again? Yes.
That last statement did.
Yeah.
Passed the two ordinances.
Yeah.
Uh I'm looking for a second. Second.
That's second by Chad.
All favor, any discussion, councilors? All fair say hi.
Hi.
Hi, thank you, councilors. Um thank you, Chad, for. Doing the work that you're doing down there, DMC. Uh. Any questions for Chad on any of this? By Glenn Bond uh. Councilors, if you wanna skim the the um. Committee reports, is there anything on there that you'd like to discuss?
I'm just gonna plant a seed. Before we decide, you know, on that Jewish street. I wonder if we tore that down and built a town hall.
Jewish street, which one of you?
One of you.
Part of one of you.
Just just a seed.
Something like that. Okay.
Just saying.
And anything else on those four topics of committee reports? I I'm curious. Georgia, maybe you know this Dell on Jewish Street, it might be five oh one or. In that area of that house that's. In the flood plain that's. Do you do you know where the what the status on this is?
Oh, I have. Different issues with Jewish street right now.
Okay.
I do not.
Okay.
I haven't checked on that one.
For everybody else. Uh there's a house down there that's been vacant. It's it's right on the corner. It's got a house wrap on it. Tried to sell it. I don't know if it's sold, it's in the flood plain. Sold at tax sales. I don't know what's happened to it and. It's just on an ice floor. Um.
Thing about Jewish street that has come up lately is that. People have asked me, are people, is anyone living in that recreational vehicle, so the park there? And is that allowed?
I think there's one, I think there is.
So we'll probably have to add that to our listings at the convention.
Um. Well.
That for committee reports, I didn't know where to put it, but uh I would like to request an HR committee to start looking at salary ordinance for next year. If it's the same committee we're on, um but that's what C is. Looking at. Probably not. We've already been informed that the maximum level is not gonna increase more than four percent. So that's where we're at with our operating budget.
When you want to set up a meeting? When?
Uh. End of last week of July, I think. And then uh inviting everyone to. I don't know. Keep looking at the town's website or the conservancy's website and help us keep. Up with changes now that we have. YouTube links. Out there with the minutes and the agendas. A little bit harder to keep up, but I have a new employee in the office. Her name's Ashley Garrett. And she's. Recently from the prosecutor's office and did a lot of stuff on the. Zoom and other. Tech, she's good with the tech, so. And that. Sidebar project, Ron had a bid for a bit. He got two quotes, I think, and we really kinda skimmed over that. But um. I don't think the quotes that he have. I don't think they're negated by adding some. Linear fee if we decide to do. Another property. I'd like to make sure Ron has a chance to tell you about those. Those quotes.
Do I have to follow Ron's voting?
I listened to the meeting last, the last month's meeting, um and it was. Did I did not hear of both that this project. On high school was. To be done. I heard that it was in question and to get quotes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all you're looking for clarification on?
That's the start, yes.
Yeah.
Sure, we uh Steve and I got two quotes. Uh. The first one came in at forty three thousand. Six hundred and one dollar and fifty cents. The second one came in at forty four thousand, three hundred and eighty six. Pretty close. And this is worth a nine hundred dollars with each other. Basically, uh. Five hundred and. Roughly five hundred and twelve linear feet. Right. And that's gonna be the path that uh.
Okay.
The path of Steve and I discussed that would be most efficient.
We need to be running this by the property owners.
Right.
And we need to build the legal requirements.
First, we need to make sure that you wanna do it and that we can afford it, and then all.
Yeah, that's. I think of and I and I'd also like to see. Data on how much it's used. I like to know traffic, pedestrian traffic patterns, when and what time.
Wrong. And the west side, you're. You're pretty familiar with the through commission and all that. Have they got one of them? Uh tire things that would across the road. Count traffic. Oh, absolutely. That we could borrow, but we'll have to do it when school starts. Yeah, but would that? Trigger. About water traffic.
Yeah, it's not, that's not triggering pedestrians.
Well, no, it's it's traffic, the cars. That's what we're we're concerned with. There's only one or. One or two cars that come down High School Street. During the day.
I thought this project was about the children walking from.
It is putting the sidewalk in, but you know, for a year they walked on the street. Uh to the middle school or intermediate.
Correct.
And then back.
Correct.
Well, now, you know, they there's a a. Parent coalition that wants to put a sidewalk in. So they can walk on the sidewalk.
For how many students?
Uh.
For how many students?
And that's what I'm asking about is the pedestrian traffic, when, where, how much and what times? And, you know. Yeah, we need to be able to historically look back on this and. Say, well, this is how we made our decision because we have. These many pedestrians under this, you know, during these times.
I do know that when we talk to John Pearl. That they have. A a number of children that go back and forth because they're doing accelerated classes. Um they have uh employees that go back and forth. Because they help each other out throughout the school years. And I'm. What he explained to me, it's like a daily thing. It's not like. Wanna go one week and then wait a month or whatever, you know, it's a daily thing.
And that's fine, but to me, that's anecdotal evidence. I'm on hard numbers, with all due respect, so.
Yes, the traffic is only when the parents are dropping the children off and they go down Sherman and then to high school. That's the only the the only uh vehicular traffic on high school. Between the schools. They do not go down that first block of high school. And it's because they go down Sherman because it's been rerouted. For the the parents from that. Um instead of on Main Street.
Well, years ago, the buses used to down.
Right, well.
Buses still goes through the other side.
Yeah, and the buses are still going through Sherman.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah. And we can't get out of our driveways. It's a cuz it's a one lane road.
Ridiculous.
But the only vehicular traffic is the parents. Who are dropping their picking up kids. So if the parents are all that concerned, I you know. I I I see a problem here. With. Having an idea as a response. Yes, there may be some concern, but. Is it worth the town to tear up people's properties or their? What they've used as property because it's an easement? For, you know, five kids. Three times a year.
And with that being said, we're gonna have to have more discussion about this. We're not gonna solve this tonight. This is. Yeah. Uh. Georgia, did you have any anything else? And councillors, audience, okay, we gotta we gotta hand up.
Just one last question. So you all voted on the bond ordinance. Do you know when you can expect to have that financial plan done?
Uh hopefully we'll have numbers on that by the end of. In August sometime because bids are supposed to be in uh. The valuation committee will review those, but then we're gonna have to have a rate study done and. You know, it's August, August or September, Georgia, do you have any insight on all that?
Yeah, I'd say September, but I wanna comment to the people in the gallery that this regional project. Most likely will be financed by commercial development and the Tiff District. And the rate study is part of that, but mostly because the rate. Ordinance we have now expires this year and it's time to do it anyway. So the rate study that we're having is not. Solely to finance. The Gateway Sewer Project, there's no way that we can support that. It has to be the commercial development supports that. And we have at least thirty percent of it committed already. From Woodhedge Mobile Calm Park. And then the rest of it would be a combination of. Rates generated by the commercial development there and the commercial developers themselves putting part of. The pipes in the ground to serve there. Now, they're. Most likely one to go in first is a hotel. Smaller hotel and then an apartment complex and then a much larger hotel complex on the Holiday Inn site in a few years. But um. If we can get. One and a half of those pieces, it will help. Pay the bond. With our economic development money, we've been saving enough for another year, so I have enough economic development money. To fund the first two years until the Tiff money is ready and then it starts to flow in and place that bond.
Does that answer your question? Stay tuned. Participate, you know, ask your questions. That's great, okay? Uh any other things? Okay, there is one last thing. Black. No, 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 not yet. Before that, Chad, you weren't around for this. Um. I don't know, two, two years ago, three, two and a half years ago, uh we uh there was some interest. Uh about. Putting a PV array at the solar uh at the waste treatment plant. Uh the engineering is all done, the financials have all been taken care of. Uh it it's a positive project. Some things are coming down the pipeline now that. Are going to impact that. One is that the big beautiful. Bill. Uh has diminished some of those incentives and uh I think it's unfortunate, but. That is maybe gonna have an impact uh. My contact, our contact with Silential Energies, uh I emailed him and he said. His attorney says, well, I don't, he doesn't think there's a big impact yet, but. The solar project was put on hold. Because of the little Hawks Nest Waste, Hawks Nest Lift Station. Because. How the. One of the ways. The TV project was gonna be paid for was through excess funds from. The bonding that happened for Hawks Nest. We still have funding, if I understand it correctly. Within our budget that we could pay for part of it or some of it, a portion of it. Georgia, you can correct me on that, but I'm bringing it back up to put it on the table that. Uh. Hawks Nest hopefully will be concluded early in the fall. And I'm gonna argue that we need to move forward on implementing this because financially. Uh I I think it's a good project and you look at the. Cost, the kilowatt cost per hour, it's cheaper to produce your own energy through PV than it is to. Um. Build new generation plants. And just as a sidebar, China is. Installing one gigawatt of of energy, of solar energy, either every eight hours or every week, and that's a lot, you know, so. Not that, I thought I was just a curious. Devil information that. Other countries are just moving ahead gangbusters and um.
When would that big project just have to be, when would that subject be finished if you decided to go with solar? Would it be in twenty twenty five or would it not be until twenty six?
Yeah, things would have to fall into place.
Really well, that's what I figured. So you mentioned the um. Now I can't think of the word.
The incentives.
Yes, they will be gone in twenty six. Now, the IRS has not updated their website, but. They won't be, they won't be here in twenty six. You won't get any credits for doing any.
Well, uh and and I don't know, there's a lot. There's a lot of information, yes, yeah. I accurate information. Accurate information is tough.
It is.
And that's why uh our representatives at Silential Energy and Carmel. Um they're playing, they're paying close attention to it and he said. No impact yet, you know, so and that's why.
That's because they haven't updated, that the big beautiful bill is gonna. It'll get updated, I'm I'm unfortunately. I'm sad about it.
Well, if you're gonna install solar, uh. Better be getting it done.
This year.
This.
Yes.
And if you wanna talk about it sometime after. You're going uh. Now, Mary Jo.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn now.
So I'm just. Uh well, hey, Joe Klein, sorry for ignoring you.
I have a, I have three quick statements, I guess. Um regarding the uh school quarter sidewalk. Um. A- as a person that works from home uh fairly regularly, I could tell you that. Dozens of children walk from the schools to the battlefield, probably uh. Uh dozens of times a year. And I think they deserve to be able to walk on a sidewalk instead of in the streets. Um with regards to minimum bill, I think a minimum bill for wastewater makes sense, uh just to cover like maintenance costs and. Some 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 measure of maintenance cost. Um. And I would prefer that the golf carts be inspected because um. I have to show proof of insurance and and such to register my vehicle, so I think uh. Vehicles on the on the roadways should also be um. Meet some kind of minimal criteria and show that they're meeting standards. That's it.
Don't note it, Joe. Thank you very much. Thank you for hanging in there.
Sure, no problem.
I guess the meeting's over now officially.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. We always. The back of your next sector.
You wanna you wanna bet a pizza on that?
You bet.